I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is Wednesday, August 20th, 5:31 PM. It is our second night of budget hearings for the 2026 budget. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Stossberg?
Here.
Ruff? Rallo?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Nasari? Thank you.
Thank you. So, as I mentioned, this is our second night of four for budget hearings spread over two weeks for the city's proposed 2026 budget. For folks following along, you can go to Bloomington.in.gov/city/budget to find information and links to the budget book or proposed budget. Also, the city council's webpage, Bloomington.in.gov/council, has links to our meeting packets of information, which should include slide decks and presentations as those come to us, along with the meeting schedule. Tonight, we are hearing presentations from four departments and a board, along with, I think, probably brief introductions or presentations for three priority areas that are the framing device the administration has used this year for its budget proposal. So, the order of that will be a priority area introduction on affordable housing and homelessness, five minutes; then Housing and Neighborhood Development Department's presentation at 20 minutes; Priority Area Introduction for Economic Development allotted for five minutes; then a presentation from the Monroe County Capital Improvement Board, five minutes; the Economic and Sustainable Development Department, 20 minutes; then a Priority Area Introduction for Public Safety at five minutes; the Fire Department at 15 minutes; and finally, we will close with the Police Department/Dispatch at 20 minutes. The other thing I would like to remind councilmembers and the public is that we took a motion at the first budget hearing on Monday this week to structure debate for the duration of the budget hearings. That debate limited councilmember question-and-answer periods following each presentation to a maximum of three minutes per councilmember. It also limited councilmember comment period to three minutes per councilmember per presentation, and limited public comment to two minutes per speaker per comment period. I believe also we have a councilmember interested in making a motion to amend that structure for debate, and I would entertain that now. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I move that the following two points be added to how we conduct the remaining budget hearings. Number one, after public comment on each budget presentation during the councilmember comment period, councilmembers may use their three-minute time allotment to redirect questions made during the public comment period to staff. The three minutes would still include the question, the answer, and if any, time remains, any final comment from that councilmember. And number two, each three-minute period of councilmember questions and councilmember comments is limited to one turn for each councilmember to allow for accurate timekeeping.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, we can just take a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion passes, so we will have those additional points to structure our debate for the duration of the budget hearings. With that, we can kick off with our Priority Area Introduction for Affordable Housing and Homelessness, and who from the administration do we have to present that priority area? I see Deputy Mayor Knapp raising her hand. Please step up to the deus, introduce yourself and position, and welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Deputy Mayor Gretchen Knapp, I'll try to keep this short. So, this is one of our, I think, a category that many of us and many of the public and all of us in the administration, I know all of you on council are deeply concerned about. I want to talk a little bit about what we included in this budget book and the priority list, but just know, of course, as a reminder to everyone, that we're very early in the process of defining what programs are, what they look like, how we cluster them. So, this is all just for our understanding of what was in here this year and to help inform what we do in future years and how we improve and refine how we talk about these things. Let's see. So, what's included in these allocations is departments whose mission is largely centered in this work, and of course, that is Housing and Neighborhood Development, which we call HAND here at the city. There are a few other, if you're looking at the list of allocations, a few other offices that have funds that we can already tell without having completed our process affect this area. The Office of the Mayor has a role for a City Homelessness Response Coordinator, clearly relevant to this work. And the Bloomington Police Department also has funds that they use to give out to individuals who are unhoused to assist with reunification or getting supplies to be able to keep a job, and you'll hear more about that from Chief Decoff later tonight. There are a lot of other departments and offices that have work in this area that we can't calculate costs for, either because they give out money in grant form and we don't yet know who those recipients will be, but some of their grants would likely include agencies that serve these purposes and the nonprofits that work in this area. There's also a lot of ARPA funding, which is not part of this budget, but will go towards these ends, and I believe Director Kilian Hansen will talk about some of that tonight. So, you'll see that we've clustered these under some, kind of chunked out the programs into broad areas: Affordable Housing Initiatives and Incentives; Community Outreach Education/Education; Engagement in Education; Homelessness and Housing Instability; Housing Preservation; Neighborhood Vitality as it relates to housing preservation; and Policy Compliance and Reporting. Now, one of the things I want to point out is that we only included programs in here, enlisted programs, that address the root causes of homelessness. In other words, my assumption was we wanted to talk about, what are we doing to address homelessness and solve that problem? There are a lot of other programs and expenses in the city that deal with the impacts of homelessness on our community, the short-term solutions. I didn't include those here, but we could talk about whether we'd like to do that as a separate exercise or as part of this in the future. We also didn't include work that has to do with housing, but not necessarily affordable housing. So, HAND does a whole bunch of work, and some of that work is about preserving housing and making sure that it stays accessible to the community, and some of it is just about making a great neighborhood and a place to live. And so, we can talk about in the future what we'd like that to look like as well. So, some of our key questions will be, and this will come up with some other issues as well, as we moved from priorities-based budgeting towards outcomes-based budgeting, how do we, within an annual budget cycle and outside of it, come up with what are our outcomes and our KPIs, our key performance indicators for these very long-term initiatives, especially as some of them are accomplished through partner agencies that we are funding or supporting in various ways, but we don't actually do the work ourselves directly? So, we'll have to talk about what that looks like. We'll want to talk about which housing efforts are about affordable or attainable housing and just more housing. You can make an argument that all housing makes, having more housing period makes it more affordable. And how do we measure the effectiveness of those pass-through dollars to our partner agencies, as well as how do we present all that during budget season? So, I'm happy to entertain questions if anyone has them, or we can move straight on.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Do we have any councilmember questions on the presentation of this priority area? I am seeing none. So, we can move to public comment. If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on the priority area of affordable housing and homelessness, please either step up to the deus if you're here in chambers, or if you are joining us online, you can use the raise-hand feature in Zoom or otherwise indicate to the meeting host that you would like to make a comment. I'm seeing none in chambers. Do we have anyone online?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. And that brings us back to councilmembers for any comments on the administration's presentation of that priority area. Any comments? Seeing none, okay. Well, with that, we will then jump right in to the presentation from the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department. We have up to 20 minutes set aside for that presentation. I believe we have Director Kilian Hansen joining us to present. Welcome, please state your name and title, and we're looking forward to the presentation.
Do I need to sign in on the sheet as well?
I don't think the clerk is tracking that for budget hearings, so don't worry about it.
All right, thank you. All right, and is the presentation coming? Oh, it's open, okay, sorry about that. Good evening, I am Anna Kilian Hansen, and I have the pleasure of serving as the Director of Housing and Neighborhood Development, lovingly known as HAND. As you know, HAND is an incredibly diverse department with numerous programs covering many priority areas. Key HAND priorities include affordable housing and homelessness, community health and vitality, public safety, and economic development. Affordable housing, homelessness, community health and vitality, public safety and economic development are deeply interconnected. Each one influences and is influenced by the others. If one of these areas is weak, it affects the rest. A lack of affordable housing means a rise in homelessness, poor health and safety outcomes, reduced community vitality, economic stagnation. But the reverse is also true. An investment in housing and health and safety means stronger communities, economic growth, lower homelessness, greater public well-being. Community engagement is the foundation of healthy, resilient, and thriving communities. It transforms residents from passive recipients of services into active partners and creating solutions. It is what transforms housings from units into a home and from survival into a foundation for growth. HAND offers numerous initiatives to engage and build community. Annually, we host Residents Academy, where participants learn about the challenges faced by city government as it balances budget limitations with community goals and service needs. We host Blooming Neighborhoods in partnership with Kona, an annual celebration to provide an opportunity for neighborhood groups to network, share, and celebrate accomplishments. We provide two monthly newsletters, The HAND Update and Rental Central, to keep our community informed. Just this spring, we welcomed our newest community building tool, the long-awaited Community Events Trailer, filled with the equipment, supplies, and games you need to throw one heck of a neighborhood block party or other community gathering. We also provide numerous grants to neighborhoods to gather, engage, beautify, and address special areas of concern and build community. Whether someone is renting, buying, or trying to stay housed, financial literacy supports housing success at every stage. Financial education is essential to housing because it equips individuals and families with the knowledge and tools to make informed decisions, avoid housing instability, and build long-term security. HAND provides housing counseling to provide that financial education, including pre-purchase counseling, budgeting, credit counseling, mortgage delinquency and default resolution, foreclosure avoidance, reverse mortgage counseling, predatory lending education, fair housing education, and rental counseling. Tenants represent about 60% of our households within city limits. Being educated and supported empowers them to be stable, responsible, and a protected participant in the housing ecosystem. We offer a free course called R101, which helps tenants understand leases, tenant and landlord rights and responsibilities, financial management, city rules, good neighboring and housekeeping skills, and how to stay safe. We also provide rental deposit assistance and are piloting a new tenant-based rental assistance program to provide support. We also offer homeownership support by offering Home Buyers Club, which helps first-time homebuyers understand and overcome the obstacles involved with purchasing their first home and what to expect after buying a home. We also offer two different kinds of closing and down payment cost assistance programs, and we are currently piloting an interest rate buy-down program to incentivize movement in the housing ladder and unlock those golden handcuffs. As an entitlement community and participating jurisdiction, we receive an annual allocation of CDBG, or Community Development Block Grant, and home investment partnership funding. HAND administers those programs. The Home Investment Partnership Program gives communities the resources to build, preserve, and support safe, decent, and affordable housing for those who need it most. The program focuses on construction, acquisition, rehabilitation, homeownership assistance, rental assistance, and housing counseling. Project examples include the more than $1 million we invested in the Core Building, the original hospital site, to develop 38 affordable units. Another is the construction material contributions we provide to Habitat for many of their builds, including seven right now. Community Development Block Grants, known as, are known, are an incredibly diverse tool, supporting community development activities to build stronger and more resilient communities. CDBG provides social service funding to food banks, childcare centers, homeless and domestic violence shelters, and more, while physical improvement projects can range widely, including infrastructure, public facilities improvements, economic development, and housing projects. CDBG's social service and physical improvement projects must meet one of the three national objectives: benefits to low- or moderate-income persons, aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blights, or to address an urgent need. Each year, projects are decided on by a panel of local residents to prioritize community needs. Please note, our social service agencies rely very heavily upon CDBG funding. Without access to safe, affordable housing, people are at greater risk of homelessness. Substance use disorders, untreated mental illness, and homelessness often feed into each other in a cycle that is hard to break without coordinated support. Last year, we committed more than $6 million of ARPA funding for projects and programs to benefit affordable housing and homelessness. Projects included: down payment and closing cost assistance to the Community Land Trust, rapid rehousing, diversion, support to domestic violence shelter, infrastructure development for the next phase in an affordable habitat for humanity development, housing stability services, development of a four-unit townhome, housing security, construction funding of approximately 48 affordable units, the lot acquisition for a homeless shelter, case management, and acquiring tracts of land for 20 affordable, single-family homes. To increase the supply of decent, affordable housing for community, we administer the Housing Development Fund, providing low-cost loans and grants. To preserve our housing stock, offering stability to those in need and restoring the health and safety and habitability of a home, we offer the Emergency Home Repair Program. We also offer Owner Occupied Rehabilitation Program to provide affordable financing to qualified homeowners to make property improvements. The program offers a 0% interest loan of up to $50,000 to qualified residents. Without preservation efforts, homes may be lost to disrepair, gentrification, or redevelopment, reducing the total affordable housing supply. We offer a Home Modifications for Accessible Living Program, which is designed to provide modifications for income-qualified residents facing accessibility challenges at home. Modifications include, but are not limited to, ramp installation, doorway and hallway widening, additional lighting installation, and handle and grip bar installations in bathrooms. This grant helps support independent living and prevents displacement and housing instability, especially for low-income residents. Rapid rehousing and case management are essential tools in addressing homelessness and housing security because they focus on getting people housed quickly while providing supportive services they need to stay housed long-term. We are providing funding for rapid rehousing to provide a combination of short-term financial assistance for items such as security deposits, rent, utilities, moving expenses, application fees, et cetera, alongside supportive case management and case management to focus on assisting persons reach their goal of finding permanent housing and addressing the barriers. 60% of our households are cost-burdened, spending more than 30% of their income on housing expenses. A job loss, medical emergency, or rent increase can push housing insecure households into homelessness overnight, especially when they lack savings or support. Addressing housing insecurity early can stop homelessness before it starts. That's why we are providing funding for diversion and eviction prevention services to prevent evictions and homelessness. I spend a lot of my time working on economic development with not only our federal programs, but also the Redevelopment Commission. One of the biggest RDC projects right now is the redevelopment efforts occurring at the former hospital site, Hopewell. Hopewell has been an enormous economic development project that involves numerous city departments, including ESD, Engineering Planning, and Parks, and our dedicated commission. Hopewell is a once-in-a-generation opportunity for the city to shape a new neighborhood, and with that comes a responsibility to get it right. We are extremely excited to be moving forward on Hopewell South with an approach that uses pre-approved home designs to save time and money, welcomes local builders to the table, and supports a healthy mix of attainable and market-rate homes. Hopewell provides an incredible chance to bring housing supply to our market, which we so desperately need. We are incredibly excited to make more progress at Hopewell in the coming months. Our largest program by far is our Title 16 Rental Program, inspecting and permitting rental units within city limits on a three-, four-, or five-year cycle, which is determined by compliance. We also conduct complaint inspections for both landlord and tenants requiring repair of conditions when necessary. Confirmed through our consolidated plan outreach, the rental inspection program has demonstrated that it has helped ensure there's no concentration of multiple housing condition problems within the city limits. My predecessor always said rentals in Bloomington don't have to be pretty, but they do have to be safe. The Title 16 Rental Program not only contributes to community health and vitality, it also contributes to public safety. These same inspectors tasked with rental inspections are tasked with Bloomington Municipal Code Title VI Enforcement, issuing tickets for trash, grass, snow, and weeds between inspections as they patrol their assigned neighborhoods. And when compliance is not met, after several rounds of ticketing, they are tasked with facilitating abatements. Enforcement of Title VI helps preserve property values and supports healthy, safe, and livable neighborhoods. While HAND contributes to public safety through compliance enforcement of Title 16 and VI, we also contribute to public safety through enforcement of Title XV, unsafe buildings and construction regulations, issuing orders to repair, vacate, seal, or remove when necessary. Compliance is a term used frequently in our department. Compliance with numerous codes, we are tasked with enforcing, but also the onerous federal regulations associated with many of our grants that we administer. Our HUD programs require regular reporting: annual action plans, consolidated annual performance and evaluation reports, consolidated plans, financial reporting, risk assessments, the list goes on. Because we are administering these funds, we are also tasked with ensuring that subrecipients are complying with federal regulations, which are too numerous to count. A significant portion of our time is spent in grant management and compliance reporting. A lack of federal compliance means that we are liable, even for things our subrecipients do. A lack of compliance means that we increase our risk assessments and jeopardize further funding for everyone in our community who relies on it. Speaking of compliance, for every HUD project, we are required to perform an environmental review to ensure that projects do not negatively impact the surrounding environment and that the project site does not pose adverse environmental or health effects on users or residents. Under 24 CFR Part 58, there are 17 federal laws, executive orders, and regulations that must be reviewed, along with any relevant state or local requirements. Any ground-disturbing activity on projects, even hypothesizing the use of federal funds made prior to an environmental review, is considered a choice-limiting action and removes our opportunity to utilize those funds. We also house the city's Historic Preservation Program and are so thankful to have a great preservationist who helps guide our community through our intricacies of certificates of appropriateness, demolition delays, nominations, registries, local historic districts, and the Historic Preservation Commission. Our efforts to support affordable housing and homelessness, community health and vitality, public safety, and economic development are all essential to the long-term viability of our city because they are deeply interconnected and collectively create the foundation for a stable, thriving community. Our budget request includes changes to the personnel, funding lines from the salary-study implementation, the removal of a computer and other supplies needed for a new position in the supply funding line, and the removal of the city council-led Jack Hopkins Program from our HAND funding line, I believe put back in yours, and a reduction in our Housing Development Fund request for '26 as we finish up our 2025 implementations. Thank you for your consideration. I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Kilian Hansen, and thank you for coming in under time. Always appreciated.
Let me sit down.
Yeah, feel free to take a seat, but we'll probably have questions. Also, just to let councilmembers Nasari and Ruff know who had to step in a few minutes late, that there was a motion in your email inbox proposed by Councilmember Piedmont Smith. It was approved, so that is now part of our structure of debate for the evening. Who has questions for our director? I see Councilmember Rallo, then Piedmont Smith.
Thank you. Does your mic work? Is this one? Thank you. So, my question is, I have a couple of questions. One is, HAND enforces property maintenance code for the city and also landscaping plan enforcement, and I wondered if that is still the case? In other words, do I direct any sort of violations that might be, have occurred to your department for enforcement? Notice of violation and so forth?
Yes, I'm not aware of any changes specifically.
Okay, my other question, maybe? I'll make a brief?
Yes, in fact, the motion indicated that you need to use it all at one time.
That's right, forgot. So, my other question is about Airbnbs, and this is sort of the perpetual bugaboo that is, you know, plaguing us, I guess, in our community, as probably 1,000 residences have been converted to Airbnbs or Verbos or whatever. And I wonder if we are going to take some sort of action? And what kind of action can we take? And can we at least have them registered so that we know?
They can absolutely be required to register. We're already on that. I hate to comment on what we can and can't do because I've hypothesized all kinds of things that turn out to maybe not be okay to address them, but we do have a strategy that we hope to be before you.
You have a strategy that you're working on?
Yes.
Oh, good. All right, well, I look forward to that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kilian Hansen. I know this is a busy time of year for HAND with all the new and returning residents. I wanted to ask about the Housing Development Fund. How is it doing as far as revenues into that fund versus expenditures out of the fund? Can you speak to that?
We're still in the green, and I think that the controller can also comment on that, but I do believe that we received at least, it was well over $1 million for, I believe, the Core Spaces project down on its college, North College, the taller complex.
You are correct.
I am correct, yes.
So, there was a million dollars received this year?
It was a little more than a million, I believe. Yeah, I don't have the exact figure, but I'd be happy to get that back to you, but we did receive that this year. We do, the fund is healthy.
Okay, so, there's a good balance between revenues and expenditures, at least currently. Okay, my next question is about the long list of programs you mentioned that were funded by ARPA, and of course, that's expiring at the end of 2026.
Yes.
Have there been discussions? Some of those were one-time investments, but some of them are for ongoing needs. Have there been discussions about how to continue funding those that are ongoing beyond ARPA?
After ARPA, no.
No discussions yet?
SCA one sort of threw a wrench, monkey wrench into our gears, but no, we have not discussed it. Most of the programs are started and off and running, so we sort of need to see how they go and what impacts they make.
All right, thank you.
Additional questions? I see Councilmember Daley. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that presentation. My question is, how would the, how does the average resident know about a lot of the programs that you talked about? For example, the Home Buyers Club, rapid rehousing services, eviction prevention services, is there proactive outreach, letting people know?
There is. I speak at a lot of places, and yes, we advertise it as much as we possibly can. Angela? Angela Van Roy helps us get out our two newsletters. They're out in our newsletters as well.
So if somebody's not subscribed, like where would they see that information if they don't even know that it exists? Is there, I guess what I'm getting at, is there, like, is some budget money spent toward advertising services or what have you?
We are advertising our services, and we promote on Facebook. We are, we send out our newsletters, we speak at various events, we table many events as well. So we do try to have it out there. It's on our website. It's not, we don't want it to be isolated.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have additional Councilmember questions? Councilmember Stasburg?
Thank you. I'm just wondering, there's a couple of open programs in your org chart, or open positions in your org chart, and I was wondering how long they'd been open for. I guess I'm especially looking at the Grant Compliance Manager because I thought that we had somebody in there.
Yeah, so we interviewed numerous times. We extended an offer to one of the most qualified individuals for that department, but unfortunately, they accepted a position elsewhere. We have found that posting that position, particularly at the grade that it is, is challenging because it really requires a lot of federal background to be successful. We are getting ready to repost it again, but it is a, and hopefully, we will see a different mix of applicants, which we think that is highly possible, given the current climate with the federal government. There have been a lot of layoffs, so we're hoping that we can get somebody that's very knowledgeable.
Okay, great. And what about the Program Manager for Rental Inspection?
The Program Manager should be posted very soon. HR has been reviewing the job description, and so we're hoping that goes out in the next few weeks as well. And then there's also, I'm not sure if it's reflected on your job chart or your chart or not, but we have another open position for a Neighborhood Compliance Officer, which has been posted, and we're interviewing right now.
Okay, great. Yeah, I don't think that that one is on here. And then, there's not enough time for you to address this, but I also am just kind of interested, kind of following up on a couple of other questions about the resident numbers we have taken advantage of the various programs that Hand has, so that's something I'll follow up with through the written questions, just an FYI in terms of, I'm interested in some of that data. Thanks.
Do we have additional Councilmember questions? I see Councilmember Rosenberg.
I'll do it. Hi, thank you. Question about rentals. Do we have any programs to incentivize landlords to be long-term rentals instead of short-term rentals? And then, do we have any programs that allow landlord participation? I know we have so many things that are owner-occupied, like we have the new program to help remove trees if it's owner-occupied, and there's rehab if it's owner-occupied, but I remember some years ago, Assistant Director Scanlon in Planning said most of our small landlords, so I think, I don't know how you all define that, maybe five homes or smaller, live here in our community, so they are, in fact, small business owners. And I know, like with ESD, we do so much for small business owners, but small landlords are just like very much left out, I think, and almost seen as just like slumlords in a way, even though they might not be, or like, right, it's just, it doesn't seem to be people we prop up in any way, and I don't know, is there anything in the hopper for that, or do we do things that I'm just not aware of?
I'm not aware of anything that we currently do to incentivize smaller landlords. We have to be very careful with our rental program. The state did try to take it away from us, so we have to be very neutral and make sure that we're, which is why we do both landlord and tenant complaints, right? So we have to walk a very close line. Whatever we do for the landlords, we're going to have to also do for the tenants, so.
Okay, thank you.
But we can think about it, and I'm more than happy to collaborate and try and figure out something else.
That could be fun. I guess another thing with our rental inspection program, we don't inspect, we really only inspect our long-term rentals, right? Like, we don't inspect IU properties because they have their own inspection program for their rentals, and then short-term, we do not.
We're not allowed to. The state will not allow us to inspect either IU property or short-term rentals. So we will inspect anything that has a lease that's longer than 30 days. Thanks.
Additional Councilmember questions? Seeing none, I will ask one that is kind of an accounting question. In the budget book, on page 157, where kind of the, there's a table that shows the fund and all the account numbers within the fund, and the 2023, 24 actual amounts, the 2025 adopted amount, and the 2026 proposed amount. The top of page 157, that first Personnel Services line and all of the account numbers there, there's like a dramatic increase in the 2026 proposed budget, which seems to be not reflecting, you know, a 10x-ing of your budget, but rather shifting what we're categorized in like other lines in previous years. Could the Controller, or could you, either one, like explain to me like what's going on there, like why? It looks like a shift in practice of some kind, of how we kind of maybe disaggregated and are now aggregating expenditures across the department.
Good evening, Council. Controller McClellan, I see what you're looking at, and this sheet looks odd to me. It doesn't look quite right. I think that, I'd like to rerun it and just get a fresh sheet and probably send that out to you guys. I think there, there may be like a header missing, or it's like combining funds, yes, because it goes, it starts with Personnel Services and then Supplies, and then Other Services and Charges, and then it goes again, Personnel Services, Supplies, Other, and that's not normal. So I don't have a full answer, but I'll get you that accounting answer as soon as possible. I'll work on that right now.
Okay, so just maybe some sort of error in the output?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had? And with that, we can, unless there are any Councilmember questions for those who didn't ask any, looks like we can go to the public for comment. So if any members of the public here in chambers or online have comments or questions about this budget, please step to the dais or raise your hand in Zoom. Any takers?
No.
No takers, okay. That brings us back to Councilmembers for comments on the 2026 Proposed Housing and Neighborhood I am seeing no comments. Okay, we are moving right along. Thank you very much, Director Killeen Hansen. And with that, we are now at the Priority Area Introduction for Economic Development. We can welcome Deputy Mayor Nap back to the podium. What, is this the dais? I think I'm saying the wrong thing. That's a podium. Welcome back to the podium for the presentation of this priority area.
Wherever I am, I'm happy to be here. So what we included in that allocation in the budget book that's showing numbers there at the beginning of the priority page is the funding for, from departments whose mission is largely centered in this work, which is, of course, Economic and Sustainable Development, ESD as we call them, and external partners on significant projects with the city and have county with fiscal connections, and that's the Capital Improvement Board, CIB, who will be making a guest presentation tonight. There are a few other known costs, so before we go through our official process of allocating every single dollar to every single program, there are a few things that we know already, which is there are some programs that have staffing costs that you could put under economic development, and it's a little iffy on where these things go. So for example, ITS has their digital opportunity grants that give people training and access to tools and training on how to become, to bridge the digital divide, and is that, I sort of categorize that as a workforce development effort, but you could probably categorize it in different ways as well. Also, programs like the Farmer's Market have, could be in multiple areas. It clearly has a deep economic development aspect for our community, but it's also a cultural event and a community gathering. So those are some questions we can decide later. There are also some interesting questions to think about when it comes to economic development in terms of, sorry, I forgot to answer the slide there. Where do we put planning? So planning's work has a huge impact on economic development, but they don't approach it. I don't, I think, you know, they're thinking about development, is that economic development? Is that policy that goes under high-performing government? Where does that go exactly? So I didn't put it here, but just wanted to note that for our future conversations. So I wanted to note, too, that when ESD presents tonight, if you look in your budget book on page 175, 176, the Controller has done a little magic on New World for, ESD covers many different areas, but including arts, transportation, climate and sustainability, as well as economic development and small business. And so the Controller has found a way to make New World tell us what they are spending in each of those focus areas, which don't necessarily align to our priority buckets, but it is interesting information, and so we included it in the budget packet for you to look at, and it is in ESD's memo. So this, the kinds of programs that were listed here under the priority area are Arts and Arts Economy specifically programs, and there's a fine line between what we can, might consider falls under that or just arts. Culture and Community Building, Long-Term Economic Development, Small Business Ecosystem, and Workforce Development. So we didn't include in the list of programs under economic development, ESD programs for arts or sustainability that aren't directly, they don't exist to give an economic development impact, although they may have one. And which of those programs fall where, we can talk about that later, but, and ESD will certainly present on those programs and all of their work tonight. So again, as we look ahead in the future and, you know, how, as we go deeper into this, economic development is definitely an area of very long-term impact. You could be a Director of this department for four years, and the true outcomes of your work might not be visible until long after you're gone. So how we evaluate outcomes in a short term of our budget cycle for something so long-term will be an interesting conversation. And when we have programs that meet multiple priorities, like the Farmer's Market or others that will come across, for many other priorities, we'll need to have some discussions about where we think they should go. And unfortunately, it's kind of like the Navy, everything must have a place and be in its place when it comes to assigning numbers to all of this stuff. Happy to take any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Nap. Do we have any questions on the Economic Development Priority Area? I am seeing none. Going to members of the public, does anyone on Zoom or in chambers here have comments specifically on this priority area of economic development?
No.
None online? I'm not seeing any in chambers. Back to Councilmember for any comments on the priority area presentation. Councilmember Rallo?
This may sound trivial, but I thought I'd bring it up at some point. I don't like the misuse of the word ecosystem to denote things that are artifices of human activity. I mean, there are ecosystems, there are biological interactions with organisms in their environment, and it becomes difficult then to talk about things like ecosystem services when it's used in conflation with human activities. So it's a particular thing that I have trouble with. I know it's becoming as part of the parlance, but it, again, I think it has a downside, should be considered. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments from Councilmembers on this priority area? I'm seeing none, so that will bring us to a presentation from the Marner County Capital Improvement Board, for which we've allotted five minutes, and who do we have from the board to present to us, it looks like? Mr. Weichert coming forward, and maybe the Controller, Controller McClellan as well.
Good evening. I was going to start off real quick with the Controller portion of that budget.
And it's going to be really, really brief.
This budget does live in the Controller's office, and there's a portion of that budget that is the lease payment that pays the bond for the Convention Center. That total is $3,409,500 that is in the budget, and the rest of the budget can be presented by the CIB for their costs.
Thank you. Mr. Weichert, welcome. You have a little less than five minutes.
Good evening. Just let me quickly say that I'm here with Jeff McKim, who's Treasurer of our board, Deb Koontz, who's the Owner's Representative, Jeff Underwood, our Controller, and I believe Buzz Krone is with us virtually. So with that, I hope I don't have to come back up here again, and I'll turn this over to Jeff McKim.
Thank you very much, Council. It's an honor to present the Capital Improvement Board's budget to you tonight and answer any questions you have. First of all, just to kind of recap a couple of the accomplishments that the CIB has had this year. Of course, we have seen the issue of $52 million bond for construction out of food and beverage taxes. We've seen the groundbreaking for the new Convention Center. We've seen the demolition of the old Napa Building, and we've seen the award of all construction guaranteed minimum, or maximum prices, packages for new construction. We may still see some for construction, renovation of the old facility. And then two major milestones coming up. Of course, new building target completion date is January 1st of 2027, and then we expect to see the completion of the renovation of the existing building in the Convention Center from, on July 1st, 2027. So that's kind of the context, so I'm trying to kind of put our budget into context. And here, the purpose of this slide is not to have you be able to read every tiny little number here, but this brings you back to the cash flow statement for the entire, for the entire project that was presented by Buzz Krone when, during the deliberations on the bond. So it's just kind of tying us back to what we're presenting tonight into the big picture. So there are a couple of, before we actually get to the budget that we are actually presenting and answering questions on tonight, I just want to kind of tell you what's not in the budget that we are presenting tonight. So first of all, this is not the construction budget. That budget has already, has already been funded by the bond that you yourself have approved. Second, it does not include the architectural fees because those, as in previous years, have been paid for with an existing appropriation out of an open purchase order, and the Controller can address more questions about that if you have any. And then finally, the Controller just addressed the other piece that's not part of this, and that is the actual food and beverage tax that is used for the annual lease payment. So she just, so ours is everything else other than those items that I just described. So here's the budget that we're actually here to present and answer any questions on. A lot of this is going to be the, what you've seen before in previous years. We have the legal and controller fees for the Capital Improvement Board itself. We have the professional fees for the Owner's Representative, just so everybody knows what the Owner's Representative is. That's a firm that we hire to essentially protect the government's interest, to protect the owner's interest, and they work, the Owner's Rep works with the general contractor every day on enforcing contract terms, on discussing the details of the contract, and working with the general contractor and the construction manager on the project. So that is our representative. We have a line that hasn't been identified before in the budget, and that's the insurance line. Up until now, that's been included in the contingency, in the broader contingency fund. This is basically builder's risk insurance, so it's the premium that we pay for insurance to make sure that nothing bad happens to the property due to, like, say, natural disasters while it's under construction, or theft or something like that while it's under construction. We have our annual website costs, and then we have that really big number called "other." So let's move on to the slide that explains what "other" is, and of course, we can go back. So this is essentially what you would call soft costs, and so it includes everything from testing an environmental for arts, relocation services, furniture fixtures, and equipment, the commissioning agent, which essentially performs the role of doing testing of the construction and equipment installation to make sure everything is installed properly to the appropriate quality assurance parameters safely and so on. And then we have contingency. And just to remind everybody that these are the contingency costs that are built into the soft cost budget, but there's also contingency built into the construction budget as well. And so I believe I'm out of time here, but we have, again, we have Deb Koontz from our Owner's Rep who can answer any detailed questions about these lines. And otherwise, we're here to answer any other questions we have.
Thank you, Mr. McKim. Do we have any Councilmember questions for the CIB presentation? Councilmember Stasburg?
Thank you. So just so I understand, like in past years, we've had
Thank you. So just so I understand, like, in past years, we've had, like, C I B budget requests kind of coming separately throughout the year at various times. So this year, just because of the timing, like, that is basically all wrapped up in this annual budget as opposed to having to have special ones later on. I just want to clarify.
That's our intention. But yes, I'll have Jeff Underwood address that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff Underwood, Controller for the C I B. Yeah, the initial budget was set back in two thousand twenty-three for two thousand twenty-four. There was initial budget. We came for an additional appropriation later that year to get that full budget, and then we got back on a regular city budget schedule. So we'll be for you this year and then again next year to finish up the project.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Do we have other council member questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, could, any updates on the, the debate about the sewer, sewer pipe? Anyone want to?
I believe I'm going to let Mr. Weichert answer that.
Okay. This is about a dispute. Do you want to just describe?
Yeah. And I would not describe it as a dispute. I would describe it as we had a difference of opinion briefly. I had asked the C B U staff to consider a proposal I had on, I was offering on the table. They thought about it. They treated their proposal very respectfully. They came back and didn't find it agreeable, and we moved on. So there isn't any, there isn't a dispute at this point.
Any other council member questions? Councilmember Zulik?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. This might be a question for Assistant Director Warren, and I'm so sorry to put you on the spot, but would you be able to talk about the benefits of allocating money towards public art? I'm so sorry.
And let me just say that the Arts Committee did give a presentation at, earlier at the C I B meeting today. So if you'd like to have, hear more detail than can be provided right now, I encourage everybody to watch that meeting. It was great. I'm really excited about what they have in mind.
Hey there. My name's Holly Warren. I'm the Assistant Director for the Arts for the City of Bloomington. Thanks for the question. I'm not going to talk in specific numbers, but I will say the way I see it is there are two benefits when we think about economic development to investing in one percent for the arts projects and other public art projects here in Bloomington. The first is financial. When we put public dollars into public art projects, the community around it sees a financial return. There is a quote that is given by the National Endowment for the Arts. They see any time that they put an investment into something using grant funds, the, the community around whatever's receiving that fund has a nine-dollar rate of return for every one dollar that is put into it. That is not a statistic for Bloomington, but that is just like a general national statistic that the National Endowment for the Arts has been able to show. And as far as other economic benefits, we think a lot about quality of place in the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development. And we see public art projects like this as something that make this place more beautiful and more attractive for folks to both want to live in, but also to come and spend their tourist dollars in. We also see public art as kind of beacons of civic identity. When we do public art calls, we ask folks, what do you want to see of yourself and your community reflected in this art, in hopes that when we present the piece of public art, people say, that is me in Bloomington. People feel more connected to their community and to each other. So that's, that's the short answer. I'm happy to answer any more questions about that in the future.
That's fabulous. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Additional council member questions? I am seeing none. We could go to members of the public for any comments or questions on the presentation from the Capitol, Monroe County Capital Improvement Board. If you're here in chambers, please go up to the podium to share your comment. And online, do we have anybody raising their hand or otherwise indicating they'd like to comment?
No.
Okay, thank you. Back to council for any comments on the C I B budget. I see none. Thank you very much, members of the Capital Improvement Board, and Mr. McKim for presenting tonight. We can move on to our next presentation, which I believe is the Economic and Sustainable Development Department. Welcome, Director Cooper Smith. You have twenty minutes, up to twenty minutes.
Great, thank you. Jane Cooper Smith, Director of Economic and Sustainable Development for the city, here to present to you our two thousand twenty-six budget proposal for the night. Oh, excuse me. Before we jump in, I wanted to highlight something that Deputy Mayor Knapp described, but I think it will help when you're reviewing and evaluating the numbers in the budget book. E S D went through two changes during this budget cycle. One, our numbers were aggregated under broad categories of funding. So we had a general fund category, and we had an E D Lit category. Under those funds, the bulk of our activities were categorized under grants. And that was simply not super accurate, and it was really difficult to track. So council, or sorry, Controller McClellan reorganized our budget. So it, in two thousand twenty-six and beyond, it will be organized by our primary activity areas. So we'll have a main category, economic development, sustainability, arts, transportation. So this year, it's challenging when you're looking at those numbers, but going forward, it's going to help make those easier to tie to our priority areas, and then also just help us administer it. Okay. Our team, E S D, would you guys mind standing up tonight and offering a wave? So our team consists of ten staff members, who are amazing, thanks for being here, and five interns. We support four primary areas of activity, and we staff four boards and commissions. We have one grant-funded position that is not reflected in this year's budget. The Economic and Sustainable Development Department drives economic growth by improving, oh, I forgot about this, our quality of life and quality of place initiatives that advance the business ecosystem. I use the qualifying adjective, Councilmember Rallo. So it's the business ecosystem, the arts economy, and climate work. We manage economic strategy for the city, and we help support incentives for transformative city projects. In terms of priorities-based budgeting, E S D's activities support high-performing government, economic development, community health and vitality, and transportation. Our transportation budget includes the three-point-eight million-dollar E D Lit pass-through to Bloomington Transit. So the bulk of that funding moves on. Continued population decline in Bloomington and aging population, and a reduction in our general ability to generate local revenue, means that we are at an absolutely critical moment for our local economy. In two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five, the administration worked on an economic development framework that advances three key goals: grow the workforce population, grow wages, and reinforce our economic base. All of our activities in E S D's key priority areas support these critical goals. In my presentation tonight, I'll excerpt some details from our framework, and I will provide highlights of two thousand twenty-five accomplishments and some of our two thousand twenty-six proposals. This is, again, not exhaustive, but I want to share a couple of sub-goals that are reflected in our two thousand twenty-six proposed budget. The first is to establish and activate nodes of distinct identity in order to make Bloomington a magnet for workforce population. We are doing this through the C C C Grant Partnership in the Trades District to further advance the Trades District as a hub for both art and tech innovation. The Mill has leased nearly sixty-eight percent of space in the Forge. There is a letter of intent in place for a hotel in the Trades District. The Mill is advancing a plan for expansion. And with the support of the College and Community Collaboration Grant, the city is working with I U to develop additional public art and gateway pieces to solidify the identity of the district. Additionally, we are working with, we are working to organize small business groups in other nodes across the community, including the area surrounding Miller Showers Park, which has seen significant changes since the adoption of the U D O in two thousand twenty, and which will benefit from additional attention in two thousand twenty-six. Staff is currently working on legislation related to the Stadium District that it will bring to council at the end of September. Staff time will be the key resource dedicated to organizing this district, and as well as the East and West Side business groups that we're working to convene. The second goal listed is to become the center of creativity for Indiana. This means not just having great public art, but having a talent pipeline for artists that includes studio space, professional development opportunities, the ability to collaborate with our regional partners, and the ability to earn a living as an artist or a creative professional. The city is advancing this goal in two thousand twenty-six through its work in the Trades District that I just described, and through its advancement of the Arts Incubator, a three-way partnership between Indiana University, the city, and Secretly Canadian. So we have a private-public partnership. E S D and the city seek additional opportunities to welcome graduates into the permanent community. We have a statistic that sixty-one percent of college graduates in a TALO survey revealed that they would like to remain in their college town post-graduation. And actually, I received Bloomington-specific data today. So for Bloomington, it's forty-nine and a half percent of our I U students would like to stay in Bloomington post-graduation, but ninety-one-point-five of them feel that that is not a possibility, given lack of jobs and challenges in the housing market. So those are some serious numbers. Sorry, I lost my track. I lost track. Okay, so that's related to college students staying over, and we see the Incubator as a way, a critical bridge to campus, that will help retain talented graduates, as well as provide space for community artists. I would like to highlight work being done specifically to support wage growth, another major economic goal. Two excerpts from the plan are, "Tell our story and target attraction of businesses in high-demand, high-wage sectors." The city launched its branding campaign in two thousand twenty-five, which was a direct output of the two thousand sixteen Wage Growth Task Force. We have received initial findings and look forward to being able to communicate about the resulting strategy later, later this year. And that's being driven out of office of the mayor, to be clear. The second category of activity is happening in partnership with Indiana University and the Mill. Since two thousand twenty-eleven, the city has been laying the foundation for a catalytic tech district in Bloomington. And under the leadership of John Fernandez at the Mill, and with the support of I U and the Lilly Endowment, the Trades District drives our economic development. The sixteen-million-dollar investment from the Lilly Endowment provides an opportunity to move farther faster, creating possibilities not just for Bloomington, but signals to the market that will benefit Monroe County and our entire region. The Mill hosted its most successful startup summer yet, bringing in young tech entrepreneurs from across the country, with one company deciding to make Bloomington its permanent home after they completed the program. Founder Friday's programming has helped foster community collaboration for thirty participants, and the pilot for Ninety Days to Scale provides insights for later-stage companies. The Mill has shown a clear focus and Bloomington-specific vision that aligns with our city's goals: grow workforce population, grow wages, and reinforce our economic base. Twenty twenty-five E D Lit funding is supporting Mill scholarships, Bloomington Remote, Codeit, Crossroads Pitch Competition, Startup Summer, and Innovation Week. The city will request, or requests again, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in program funding for the Mill in two thousand twenty-six. Small business efforts also play a critical role in reinforcing our economic base. Twenty twenty-six activities in this area will include supporting activation of the Downtown Action Plan, which was seed-funded with Creed Funds in two thousand twenty-five and is being managed by Downtown Bloomington, Inc. The partnership with Retail Strategies has already provided critical new information to us about how our downtown operates, who is visiting when and why, and what can businesses do to capture those potential customers. The Action Plan, which has had broad business participation, will be released later this year. Twenty-five thousand dollars in the two thousand twenty-six budget will serve to implement low-cost, high-impact actions from this plan in partnership with Downtown Bloomington. We also seek to continue supporting destination tourism in Bloomington. In two thousand twenty-six, we budgeted almost twenty thousand dollars for a wayfinding audit and an update that will support updates to signage across the city. Current wayfinding has not been updated since two thousand five. This will be important as we activate nodes of distinct identity and support the expansion of the new convention center. We also requested twenty thousand dollars for targeted gateway cleanup to help put a shine on Bloomington during critical weekends. These small amounts will go a long way to make sure that Bloomington is at its best when it greets residents and visitors alike. It all starts with a visit, as Mike McAfee would say. In two thousand twenty-six, we requested an increase to the funding line for business safety and security, business safety, security, and cleanliness grants, which helped businesses prevent or recover from damage to their property related to impacts from unhoused residents. While this grant does not address the root causes of street homelessness, it allows the city to help stabilize its small business ecosystem in the downtown corridor and beyond to make sure that they are able to remain in place as other departments and partners work to address root causes. This grant has helped install security cameras, replace and repair windows, provided power washing, and myriad other supports. It is critical for these operators. I also wanted to highlight that while it is not reflected in our annual budget through the general fund or E D Lit, important economic development work happens via the Bloomington Urban Enterprise Association, which administers a separate fund that is applicable only to the geography of the enterprise zone. Residents can find out if they are eligible for B U E A grants by visiting bloomington.in.gov/myBloomington, or simply Googling my Bloomington. The annual budget for the B U E A, which is also supported by Ms. De La Rosa, is around six hundred thousand dollars. Further expanding the creative economy is a, is a pillar of our economic development framework. Arts programming shows an increase in two thousand twenty-six because, excuse me, it reflects the shift of Buzzkirk-Chumley operating support from council budget to E S D budget, which we believe is appropriate and allows for better tracking of expenses. In reality, the two thousand twenty-six budget is on par with two thousand twenty-five. Our arts programming hits three primary categories: grant funding for local artists and specific projects, funding for arts venues, and then public art and public art maintenance funding, and operational support for arts organizations. I think I said that twice. As with small business, B U E A grant funding also mirrors citywide arts funding, supporting grant-making for arts projects, artistic advancement, and operational support. In two thousand twenty-five, we saw artist parties, the painting of traffic boxes in the downtown corridor, a pilot public art tour, and many other events and arts projects launched in collaboration with the incredible artists and volunteers across the community. This fall, we look forward to the official opening of the Arts Incubator space adjacent to Switchyard Park. I'm losing my voice. Too many words. Turning now to climate action and sustainability. The city's efforts in these categories are funded by E D Lit. I mean, everything is funded by E D Lit now. The activities hit three budget priority areas: high-performing government, community health and vitality, and transportation. While the city's activities are primarily supported by local income tax dollars, sustainability leadership and Sean Mia has done an excellent job in attracting outside funding for residents, for the city, and for the region. I wanted to offer a snapshot of our program categories and highlight the importance of our reporting, monitoring, and maintenance investments. These are high-dollar tech interfaces that serve a range of functions. They help us, oh, gosh, they help us account for and report out on greenhouse gas emissions. They provide a point of contact for the public to engage in climate action, directing them to additional financial resources, and they track solar production and indicate when maintenance Sorry about that. Okay, so I think I need to go to the next one. Right. You may remember that a two thousand twenty-four NOAA National Oceanic and Atmospheric, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Association grant supported a heat mapping study, which provided our team actionable data about where dangerous hotspots exist in Bloomington. In two thousand twenty-five, the team directed dollars to improve infrastructure and tree canopy to protect residents in these areas. In two thousand twenty-five, Sean Mia and Julie Perry, with the support of the city grants manager Jonas Chang, received an epic grant in the amount of five hundred and eight thousand dollars for energy upgrades and support to the Buzzkirk, to turn the Buzzkirk-Chumley Theater into a climate resilience hub. The project is now in the schematic design phase. For two thousand twenty-six, I also wanted to underscore the difficult choices that we've made in this focus area. We reduced the budget for Stay Cool Bloomington to twenty-five thousand. We reduced the total volume of seal funding to two hundred thousand from three hundred thousand. We made smaller reductions to sustainability grants, e-bike voucher, and bus stop fund lines. Sorry, I'm speeding up so we don't go over. While we are deeply disappointed to reduce these funding lines, we believe that the city's climate action plan goal of reducing emissions to two thousand eighteen levels by two thousand thirty can still be achieved with our reduced and targeted two thousand twenty-six budget. And this slide highlights an important milestone for Bloomington. It illustrates the inaugural trip to Ivy Tech for Bloomington Transit, helping connect students and employees on the West Side Employment Zone to our city's core. While E S D's transportation line reads as the most significant component of our departmental budget, the bulk of this nearly four million dollars is pass-through funding for Bloomington Transit. John Connell will present to you on the twenty-seventh, and will talk in-depth about what they have accomplished with this funding. I'm so sorry. The inter-local agreement that transfers three million, eight hundred and six thousand one hundred dollars to Bloomington Transit for expansion of service expires at the end of two thousand twenty-seven. On the continued theme of doing less with less, the two thousand twenty-six T D M strategy represents a change for the city. We propose a funding reduction in the Go Bloomington website- We propose a funding reduction in the Go Bloomington website and related marketing efforts. The goal of increasing the number of people using public transit, walking, biking, and carpooling has not changed. We still want that. The current strategy was a marketing campaign driving people to the Go Bloomington website and incentivizing them to create an account. The campaign itself was very effective. Great marketing and great people created accounts. But what we didn't have is evidence that people retained the accounts and kept using them after the initial incentive, or that people who did use the accounts and entered data were actually changing their behavior. Entering a new bike ride versus entering what they already do every day. So we also don't have evidence that putting a lot of dollars into promoting this particular website that tracks usage of public transit is more effective at changing behavior than, say, simply putting dollars into public transit directly with no middleman. I'm so sorry. For these reasons, 2026 represents an opportunity to refocus our TDM efforts and to update our strategy for our new revenue context while continuing to manage the remaining components of the program. In all of that said, I want to thank Jeff Jackson and the team at 1031 Marketing, which is a local startup that we supported with these funds for their work in engaging the community in our TDM efforts. It will serve as a strong foundation for what comes next. I'll cut it short. With that, I'm happy to take questions. I just can't get another sentence out. So sorry.
Sorry that you're, yeah, dealing with a sore throat. Thank you very much for the presentation, Director Cooper Smith. Do we have questions from council members? Any council members with questions? Councilmember Stossberg, and then Pete Monmouth Smith.
Okay, I wasn't planning on going first. I thought there would be another minute, so hopefully I can use my three minutes wisely. I guess I, one of the lines in your budget memo was other services reflecting an elimination of certain sponsorships like BEDC and SBDC. So you didn't talk about that at all, I don't think, in your presentation. So if you could just talk about that for a quick minute, that would be great.
Sure, I think for both of those funding lines, we're really asking what's essential for Bloomington. So the SBDC is the Small Business Development Center, and they provide technical assistance and a wide range of assistance to small-business startups and extant businesses across the community. They have a number of funding sources and will continue receiving support from the BUEA for some of their Bloomington activity. They received $5,000. We didn't feel like this amount was essential to their success, and we have reallocated that to other programs that we think are essential for Bloomington at this time. I'm gonna take a sip. And by the same token, with our funding reduction or removal from BEDC, we are simply required to focus on what's working now and what is working for Bloomington now, and our economic development strategy is coming out of the Trades District and out of this office and out of the mayor's office. And in partnership with our many wonderful partners, we will retain a membership to the BEDC, and we will continue collaborating with them. But in terms of what we need to do to drive our real estate-constrained 21st century economy forward, it's a different model than the industrial model that has been largely advanced by the BEDC. So for those reasons, perhaps others that won't be discussed here, we're not choosing to fund them in 2026.
Okay, thank you. I'll have other questions that I'll follow up with through the written comments, both about participation in the various, like, grant programs and things like that, similar to what I asked the Hand Department about, and then also with the Go Bloomington website not being a thing anymore, more about how the focus of the TDM manager is gonna change. But I won't make you talk right now in the next 30 seconds.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome, thanks.
It's not a ploy to get out of answering questions.
That'd be some very fine acting there. My question is about the budget sheets, so the funding sheets that have all the budget lines. I am very confused, so I'm looking at the general fund, nothing budgeted, and everything is coming out of ED Lit, which was not used at all last year. So can, maybe the controller can explain what's going on there?
The ESD department had, let's see here, they had $6 million in their grant line in ED Lit last year, and we moved over their salaries and their miscellaneous other expenses into the ED Lit line because their entire department basically works on administering that $6 million that is in ED Lit. So we thought it was better for their tracking to be able to put their entire department into the ED Lit fund. And then I also realized what's going on with these legal sheets is that some of these departments, like ESD, they're broken out into programs. ESD has, they're main, they have economic development, sustainability, transportation, and arts. And so that did not come through in this macro that we used this year to create these legal sheets. So I'm re-pulling those budgets, those legal sheets, right now. But that is why the general fund legal sheet has zeros for 2026, and then all of those expenses were moved into ED Lit.
It's difficult to compare last year's budget with this year's since they're in two different funds, but I will endeavor to do so anyway. That's all I had right now, thank you.
Additional council member questions? Councilmember Ruff?
I was wondering if the department has any data, has any idea about the number of Bloomington students that go to IU, students from Bloomington, from Monroe County, from our area, from our metropolitan area, or even our whole economic impact area right in this part of the state, that go somewhere else to college and don't return to Bloomington? Because as commonly we hear, okay, how do we get more students that come to IU Bloomington to stay in Bloomington? Do we have any idea about the numbers of Bloomingtonian young people that go somewhere else and don't come back?
We don't have that data now. I think part of the reason we work to capture these IU students is that they're very trackable, whereas some of our local students that leave after graduation, it may be a little more difficult to find and capture that data. But I think it is very much in line with this goal to work to attract workforce population. It would be great to have, you know, locals come home.
Okay, thank you. Other council member questions? I have a few, thank you. You mentioned, I think, the inter-local agreement with Bloomington Transit runs through the end of 2027, is that right? My recollection was that needed to be a multi-year agreement because they needed match funding that they could rely on for rapid electrification of our bus fleet, taking advantage of federal resources. Do you know, was that multi-year funding stream only needed through the end of 2027 for, like, the duration of, you know, what they were trying to do? Or was it more like, we didn't want to tie our hands for 10 years, so we picked, you know, four to give them, like, enough, you know, like, lead time to, like, I don't know. Like, I'm trying to get a sense of, like, this is gonna be a cliff for them. Obviously, we've really invested in transit if we don't renew that after 2027, so I'm trying to get a sense of its impact, potentially.
I don't have an answer to that. I mean, simply because I didn't work, that was negotiated when I was in my previous role at the city, but I wasn't working on that project. So I'm not sure why they chose that 2027 expiration date for the contract, but I mentioned it because, you know, it's on the horizon and it felt relevant, so.
Yeah, no, thank you for that data point.
And then I guess I can say, the grant agreement specs out a number of activities that are really related to expansion of service, and so I know John Connell will be ready to talk to you all about that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, thank you. So the other question I had, I appreciated in your presentation some of the direct funding amounts, you know, by program. In the budget book itself, we've got, you know, programs, sometimes, as the deputy mayor noted the other night, sometimes it's much more clear and discreet of a program, other times less so. But for the things that are fairly discreet, would it be possible to amend those tables to actually include a budget amount by program? So we've got these tables that have, under high-performing government, economic development, whatever the category is, you know, subgroup of things, environment, climate, sustainability, arts and arts economy, program title, and then a program description. Can we add a fourth column that is budget amount, or is that not feasible?
I think that we're gonna achieve that when we correct the legal sheets, because especially with Jane's budget, it's really nicely, like, tied together, that you will, it's all nicely tied together in the fund, and it's divided by department.
Well, that would give us a programmatic aggregate by focus area, but not necessarily, like, each row in these tables in the budget book that I'm describing? So small business development is one of the programs named, like, could, is that a thing we'd have a cost amount for?
Oh, okay. Maybe you could address that, yeah.
Deputy Mayor, now, that will be accomplished when we complete the PBB implementation process with the software. Once we know we have the right programs and we like how they're clustered and we think they're in the right buckets, then that step is to go in and assign dollars, including fractional staff time. So that would be the goal, be next year when we're looking at something, whatever the program is, there's a dollar assigned to it that includes all the people, all the supplies, everything for that program.
Okay, but not for this year's budget, not achievable, is that right?
Not even remotely achievable, but I wish it were.
Thank you. Any other council member questions before we go to public comment? Councilmember Allo, please.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation. Are we still deploying solar panels?
Yes, we are. Sean, would you like to talk about that work right now?
And I have kind of a corollary, and that is, are we anticipating that we might need a fund for replacement, since they have a lifespan of a couple decades? The ones we put in 10 years ago are probably at half their life lifespan. So that's my question.
Yes, thank you. This is Sean Mia, Assistant Director of Sustainability. Thank you for the question and the opportunity. So we are monitoring our solar panels every day. We have a contract with Veragee, who is our operation and maintenance vendor. They're monitoring production and making sure that if there are panels that are damaged that need to be replaced, they are replacing them, and ESC is covering those costs. And so the typical lifespan of a solar panel is 20 years, and so, you know, we are reserving panels in our warehouse for replacements throughout the lifespan of our 20 years. And so we have plenty of panels to replace them as they're needed.
And I just thought of something else. Suppose we were to get, like, a big hailstorm. Would that pretty much ruin many of them, or are they, are they up to that sort of stress if we were to?
They're designed to withstand typical storms. If it's a major hailstorm, we probably will see some damage. But again, we have panels in our warehouse that we can replace. If it's all of our 38 systems, we might have a problem, but I don't anticipate that.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other council member questions? Seeing none, we can go to the public for any comments on the Economic and Sustainable Development Department budget. If you're here in chambers, please step up to the podium, and if you're online joining us, please raise your hand in Zoom, or otherwise let the meeting host know you'd like to comment. You could be first. You could be the first public commenter of tonight. Okay, well, I take it we have none?
Yeah.
And that will bring us back to council for comment on the ESD budget. Any comments from council members? I see council member Ruff, and then Pete Monmouth Smith.
Well, I just want to follow up sort of with the question I asked. You know, I think we need to further define and quantify some goals related to the strategy of trying to capture as many IU graduates as we possibly can. I mean, I doubt that the state university, state university systems when they were created, I doubt the idea was, let's send our kids from around the state to one place or two or three places and hope they stay there and further the development of that community at the cost, at the expense of every other town in the state where they've come from, in impoverished and brain drain, all the other communities. I think it was just the opposite of that. I think it's like, we'll send our kids to a place where there's critical massive educational opportunity, like a big university, and then hope they go back to their communities and help those communities thrive throughout the state. Now, I know Bloomington, you know, I grew up here, several others of us grew up here. We do have a lot of particularly university-related young people, kids of faculty, et cetera, that do go off and stay, they leave. So some idea of what that ratio is, what the balance is, and some goal set for, you know, what percentage of what we see drain away from Bloomington, our young, talented, and best and brightest, and have our goal of capturing our share here, to remain here that came from out of town to come here, have some relationship between those two. I just, I just think it's just too rough of a strategy or an idea to just say, we just want to retain as many as we possibly can that came to IU Bloomington. And so I would encourage the department staff to, you know, to look into that, to think about that, and to, you know, and maybe come up with a more defined strategy, or not strategy, but, you know, plan for what the goals are, what the underlying justifications are. Because the idea isn't just, of course, to just grow Bloomington, and of course, we don't want to impoverish other sister communities and brother and sister communities in our state by trying to keep their best and brightest here. So anyway, that's all, thank you.
I just want to say, this department has done some of the hard work of cutting some programs or cutting some support, which I think all departments are gonna have to look at doing in the coming years with the impact of SEA1. So I appreciate that. I think that's, these are small cuts, of course. This is not a big department with a huge budget to begin with, but we do need to start thinking critically about our investments and the biggest bang for the buck and such as far as implementing our city goals. I was gonna say something else, but it has just gone right out of my brain. So thank you for your presentation.
And with your own motion, that was your one chance. You can't have another bite at the apple. Okay, do we have any other council member comments on the ESD budget? I have a few. Let's see, I think, so this is about the ESD budget and also kind of the budget writ large and some of our changes in our approach, which I appreciate that we're trying new things and, you know, reorienting in some ways. I'm having, at times, a little bit of a hard time, like, getting my, getting the full picture, like, and I've been comparing to past budget books in some sense, that's part of why I asked about the lists of programs we have and whether we could have dollar amounts with them. A little bit, to ESD's credit, you did that in your presentation for some of the things. I'm looking back at, like, last year's budget presentations, for instance. You know, we presented on goals for the departments for each year, and just tended to have more granular detail across the board, you know, all departments, with, like, where the money's actually going. So last year, under, like, climate action and climate resilience, we saw the 1.575 million, you know, allocation, and then 70,000 for solar operations and maintenance. We had a kind of similar breakdown on slides, you know, today, less so in the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department, for instance. We didn't really have any type of programmatic costs. And I think that's important for us to have that type of visibility for the very purpose of making the difficult choices about trade-offs and about and about where we need to scale things back. So too, we need to know how, how well things are functioning. So when you only have one fund for a department and you kind of see the aggregate figures for a fund, it's just really hard to get, to get a clear picture and to be able to have real impact or even say in kind of like these trade-offs we, we should be collectively, you know, making together. So to the extent that we can, I think, you know, programmatic costs would be great to include. I, I recognize, per the deputy mayor's comment earlier, that I don't think that's going to be possible for everything, but it might for some things. So that would be really helpful. The other thing I wanted to comment on, and I wonder if this was Councilmember Pete Mount Smith's other thought, which is the, the shift in the practice of this year to, to move all salaries and personnel into the ED Lit Fund. When we approved the ED Lit Fund four years or so ago, a major concern at the time was that it would sort of get swept into the general fund and there would be very little visibility or accountability to a set of priorities to do new things rooted in the outcomes we're trying to achieve in bold goals like the Climate Action Plan, like our transportation plan, like our comprehensive plan. And so the council at that time successfully got a separate fund for ED Lit. We knew priorities would change over time, but the purpose was to say, this is additional. We've got current staffing levels, that kind of thing. We're going to do new stuff with this money that's matched with, with our priorities and outcomes. And by moving personnel into ED Lit Fund for this department, that kind of happens in the general fund now instead, and we lose sight of that. And so it, it creates like a, it gets us away from the tools for accountability and visibility that we had put in place in the first place. I'm at my time. But that, that's some, of some concern to me, too. Thank you. Councilmember Rallo.
Yeah, this discussion of homegrown labor or Bloomington residents going to school locally got me thinking. And just, I, I just wanted to say for the record that if we, if we have an economic development strategy that attracts businesses from elsewhere, that is predicated on high skilled labor, that imports people from elsewhere, that will inevitably add to competition for housing. So our housing costs will probably remain the same or, or go up despite, you know, our attempts to increase supply. So I'm not saying that that is necessarily our strategy, but I think we have to be wary of, of that and make sure that at least a high proportion of the workforce is employed locally or at least regionally so that, you know, we can alleviate that, that competition for, for housing, which is obviously in short supply. That's all. Thanks.
Any other final council member comments? Councilmember Stossberg.
Thank you. I just mostly actually with my comment, want to call out Councilmember Flaherty and his comments and thank him for that. A little bit of a history about the ED Lit Fund through the Monday night stuff. And then also tonight, I was also kind of looking at that sort of new thing in terms of the number of things that were shifting into ED Lit as a funding source and kind of thinking like, why, why exactly are we doing that? And I kind of like get it from like an accounting or bookkeeping or simplification standpoint, but it, it did kind of like raise the hairs on my back going, yeah, but in a few years with SEA one, we're not going to have the ED Lit anymore and then we're going to have to move everything back. Like, like how is this going to work? So I guess I'm just glad that Councilmember Flaherty brought that up as just sort of a thing that we're seeing in terms of understanding and that Councilmember Pete Mount Smith also kind of mentioned it in terms of being able to compare this year's to last year's and how challenging it is to look across those spreadsheets, which I also have found myself doing a bunch. So that, this is definitely like, that aspect makes things just a little bit more confusing, I think, kind of across the board. And I do appreciate Councilmember Flaherty's kind of like historical viewpoint there of like when ED Lit started and the origins of that because that's very interesting. And it doesn't seem like that's the way that it's now being used. And I just kind of wonder whether that was something that got lost actually in the transition and that maybe we didn't realize that that was the original purpose of trying to use that fund in that way. But it's also really large as well. So anyway, I'm kind of rattling on, but I just appreciate Councilmember Flaherty for, for bringing that up as something to consider and, and talk about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other final comments? Seeing none, we can move on. I believe that takes us in our agenda to the introduction of the priority area, public safety. Deputy Mayor Nap, welcome back to the podium. And thank you again, ESD.
Hello again, Deputy Mayor Nap. So this is a fairly straightforward category in some respects. Obviously, the departments whose mission are largely centered in this work, Bloomington Fire Department, Bloomington Police Department, the CIB is, that's a mistake left over from another slide. Sorry about that. And then we do have departments that have staffer programs with known costs. In other words, costs that we already have a dollar number attached to that could be considered applicable to this category per Councilmember Flaherty's comments about having dollars attached to things, and those are included here. As we saw earlier, the administrative divisions of fire and police aren't included here. I did include in the table of expenses in this category, some parks expenses that are actually ARPA dollars, but I included them because I thought it was important for our community to understand that there are significant expenses spent on public safety. And we've been able to use ARPA money for that and will for a while longer. And when the ARPA money is gone, the question of how we fund all of the things that we've been funding internally and externally with ARPA funding and whether we can do that at all is of course yet to be determined. The categories that we created here cover a broad range. Both of our police and fire departments do all kinds of work that is both incident response, but also a lot of public outreach. What we consider alternative response, you know, we can define that in different ways, is that always only unarmed response, thinking of some conversations I've had recently, or could it include Mih, for example, our Mobile Integrated Health Unit. So there are questions about, of course, about how we categorize all of these expenses and, and what we hope to see there. So I do think we have some, as we go into allocating costs, and many of the costs that we have are people costs. And that's why it can feel a little tedious to have to split things across different programs and make these hair splitting decisions about, is a prevention program for domestic violence, for example, do we consider that public safety or is that community health or some other category? So I think we'll have some robust conversations about that. What we consider fits into this category under prevention or whether we want to see that somewhere else. Where we put administrative costs, our consultants will also have advice on that. And we do have some questions, too, about actual spending. We have some annual grant money that we give out for, CFRD, for example, gives out violence prevention grants. And we know the total number of that at the beginning of a year, but we don't know who yet we will award it to. And so there may be some category, some grants in there that we wouldn't think would necessarily fit into one category or another. So there's some, there's some decisions to make there. And of course, the ever-present question of how in our limited time that we have or however much time we give ourselves to present, how do we present all of these different programs without having 40 people up here talking to you every night? Or maybe we do do that. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions? I see Councilmember Rallo.
You're the first.
Okay. Pressure's on. So, great. I, I like that presentation. Maybe this is a bit tangential, but my question is about, you know, we, we fell behind on public safety. Now we're catching up. Much gratitude for that. But with the aim of concurrency, that is keeping pace or even having infrastructure and services in place, anticipating new development. So say Summit, big development, 4,250 units. We're already lacking a fire station on Tap Road. Will our priority be to put that infrastructure in place before the buildout occurs significantly? Is, is that part of the, you know, sort of the grander vision of public safety? Let's keep pace or even anticipate, be proactive?
That is a great question. That is a deep question. I don't have a great preformed answer for that. I think our chiefs have probably been working on those issues or their departments have been working on it for much longer than I've been in office and would know more about the kind of historic planning that's taken place for that. As you know, SEA one has thrown a monkey wrench into everything. So plans that we've made in the past that were going to work, we, they may still work in the future. We'll, we'll find out. But I think there's, those are great questions to ask and we do need to consider them while we're also looking at how can we actually fund all of the pieces of making those neighborhoods happen, all of the roads and infrastructure, as well as the public safety that they will need support for.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sure Chief Kerr will have maybe something to, to add. So thank you for that.
Additional questions for the presentation of the public safety priority area? Seeing none, we can go to public comment on this priority area as presented by the deputy mayor. Seeing no one in chambers, anyone online indicating?
No.
Okay, thank you. Back to council for any comments on this priority area. Councilmember Pete Mount Smith.
Well, overall, I, I, I think it's unfortunate that we don't have another category here other than police and fire because community safety involves a lot of other, other ways in which to address emergency situations. A lot of that has to do with social, social workers, people with mental health experience, peer counselors and such that we're seeing throughout the country are being created in, offered through programs that are known as community responder programs in many cities, large and small throughout the United States. And I know we, I've talked with the mayor's administration about this and the Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission came out with a report that reviewed some of those best practices and, and recommended that we do a study here in Bloomington to see if this might be a good investment here in Bloomington. When you look at just as a concept, you know, that, okay, something is going very wrong, some, the community is somehow threatened and your options are to involve law enforcement or to involve the fire department, that is not a really big palette of options when in, in many cases, especially as our mental health services have broken down, as the drug addiction crisis has continued, in many cases, those are not the best responses to solve the problem and to get at the root of those problems. So just overall, I would love in the future to see a third category in this, in our budget under public safety, to have a community responder category that is not under the police. I know we have social workers under the police and we'll talk about that. But I feel strongly we need to move in that direction. So that's, that's my comment about this category is that we are still stuck in police and fire, whereas really studies have shown, and even historically, if we go to a time before policing, that, that the community response, the unarmed response, the kind of response where you can't end up in jail, you, you instead end up with resources to get yourself on a better footing, is something that is missing and that, that we, we should really incorporate. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council members on the public safety priority area? I'm seeing none. And with that, I think we are moving on to the Bloomington Fire Department. Welcome, Chief Kerr. You will have, I think, 20 minutes for your presentation. No, 15 minutes.
I only have 15.
15, yes. Thank you for catching that.
Hope it doesn't take that much, but we'll see. Well, Roger Kerr, Chief City Bloomington Fire Department. First off, I just want to thank Deputy Chief Litwin, who puts this budget together every year and does a great job and does most of the heavy lifting. And then Chief Zeke, who's back here, runs our operations side. And then Chief Drescher, who runs the training division, which we'll talk about here at the end. And then Chief Daffren couldn't be with us tonight, who does the MI agent prevention. So all that teamwork makes all this work really well. We are basically four big categories, what you would consider operations response, which if you call 911, that's what you get. We have inspections and investigations division. We have the MIHs and then we have training. So just kind of a quick highlight, as you know, most of our cost is driven by personnel. Our budget basically is flat, other than the collective bargaining agreement, which was agreed upon last year. And it was in the second year of its, of its agreement. So then we'll work on that next year. But 911 calls in 2023 were 5,961 and you can see in 2024, that went up 8.2%. That number just continues to grow. It has, I don't think in my time here, it has ever gone down. It always continues to increase. So our services are, are needed more than ever. On inspection side, you can see that they've also gone up. That's because we've had now three full-time inspectors. One of them is, got started last year, so we've gone up. I'll just preempt. Next year, that will, probably will go down some because we have taken on the sororities and fraternities on the IU campus. And so that has taken one inspector almost an entire six months to get through. So that has taken away from some other, but we're also protecting and inspecting a large population. So it's a trade-off that we're willing to, to make right now. The MIH division, and I probably said this last year and I probably will say it every year, is probably one of the fastest growing divisions we have. What they do in the community outside of 911 calls is pretty amazing. You can just see there how the numbers have increased every year. They'll continue to increase. I'm sure when I come back next year, it'll be bigger than that. The one I will point out, the average client visit from five to eight, that just means they're spending more times with people who are on the margins and giving a chance to get them healthcare. They've gotten people's social security cards. They've got ramps built. They've got wheelchairs, that kind of stuff that just takes time with, when you have client interaction. So they're spending a lot of time with clients, which means that keeps them from calling 911, keeps them from, in their houses, keeps them ability to get the medical care they need. They've started telemedicine, which means they don't have to go to the doctor. They can actually go, we can go to them. The doctor can log on and basically have a, a visit with them without having to leave the house. They've started a permanent car seat fitting station now here. And we're the only one in Monroe County. So if you have somebody who needs a car seat, they can come to us and we can help them. That's all grant funded. So the car seats are grant funded. So it's pretty, pretty amazing what they've been accomplished in just the last couple, three years. I wanted to bring this up because you talked, you know, we've talked about the collective bargaining agreement and what did it do? Well, I think this is exactly what we hoped it would do and it did what we wanted to do. As you can see, in 2023, when we ran a process, we had 141 total applicants. In 2024, when we were a long way behind, that number was way down to 87. We just completed the process. They had 272 applicants start. We've hired, as it says there, on September the 15th, when we swear in the two individuals, we will be fully staffed for the first time in a long time. And that is because of what you helped us do, which was pass that collective bargaining agreement and make us very competitive so that we can be fully staffed, like I said, for the first time in a while. As you can see there, capital projects, that's a lot of big stuff going on right now. Station three, which is up on the IU campus, is just about complete. They're finishing up some minor stuff. They still got some grading to do outside, but predominantly it is ready to go. We'll be moving back into that here hopefully shortly, by the end of September. And the Operations and Training Center, which is south of town, you'll see now there's a big hole in the ground. We've got that started and we're pretty excited about getting that up and going. That'll give us a lot more space to store equipment, store some reserve apparatus, and just give us a lot more room to train. They can do the training in the classroom and literally walk right down the hill to the training tower and put that practice into use, not have to get in a car, drive across town, pack up their gear. And that stuff's a lot more efficient. And then lastly, I'll bring this up. I think Councilmember Rallo brought this up on the first night about how do we collaborate with other agencies? For the first time this spring, we did a joint recruit academy with Monroe Fire Protection District. So they had a hiring group and we had one and we got together and they all went through recruit academy together. So we supplied, as you can see in that video, there's instructors from Monroe Fire, there's instructors from Bloomington Fire. We housed it. They helped us with all the logistics and all that. So it basically was a joint academy. First time this happened, it was a huge success. I imagine we'll be doing a lot more, such so that Ivy Tech was a part of this as well. So everybody who went through that academy got credits from Ivy Tech for class work. And they got recognized from, at the state level for the, this cooperation amongst these three and got an award for Ivy Tech at the state level for this academy. And I think pretty much this is the model that a lot of people would like to use. So I think with that, I will take any questions you might have.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your presentation. Questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, Chief. So one question I have is, you've got more calls, 911 calls, how is response time? Are you able to meet those? Are you able to maintain your record of response time, which I, as I recall, memory serves, is quite good?
Yes, it's been a little challenging. We're better off now, we've got back down into the new station, that puts us back in a better position, we've got some equipment back where needed. Now, the challenge has been, we had to move out of Station 3, so we've, it's kind of hindered some of the recalls up on campus, but we're getting ready to go back. So once we get back there, we'll be back to being able to respond just like we, as good as we have in the past, yes.
Okay, great. And what accounts for that 8% plus number of calls? Is it just across the board? Or is it anything in particular that you can?
I would say it's across the board, but it's heavily involved on EMS side. That has been the fastest-growing component. I know we say fire, but the reality of it is, we do a lot smaller portion of fire than what we've ever done. We do a large portion of EMS kind of work, which is predominantly where that run volume has picked up, is on the EMS side.
Okay. And then my last question is about the TAPS, the Tap Road Fire Station anticipated for that large development summit. Can you tell us anything about that? Is that on the?
We have put.
Working on that?
Yeah, we have thoughts and discussions, but as has already been mentioned, Senate Bill 1 has kind of put a lot of that on hold, just really don't know what funding is going to be there and where it comes from, excuse me. Some of it is the horse in the cart type thing. Do you build the station in anticipation of the grow out of the residents, or you wait till the residents get somewhat started halfway through and then build up to meet it? So that's a conversation that I think the administration and the mayor's office and all of us have to have at some point of, how do we want to balance this? And then with funding, how do we do it?
It used to be that we were anticipating TIF funding to be utilized. That might be part of it.
Could be, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Additional councilmember questions? Councilmember Stasburg.
Thank you. Last year, with state law changes, the Fire Department decided that they wanted to do the Fire Merit Commission.
Yes.
And I just want to know how that's going.
It took a while to get it going. Finding commissioners was a little bit harder than we anticipated, but we do, we have found enough that we have one vacancy, so we do end up have a quorum. They have done their first official act, which was certified those two hirers that will be coming on in September. They took care of all that hiring process, so it is up and running, seems to be working really well, and the union and us are happy with the way it's going, so we're glad that we got it accomplished.
Great, thank you. And then to like totally change gears on that, down into your, the line item details. So, and this was another one of those line items, where as I mentioned before, things went from general funds to ED Lit. So I think that I successfully tracked the instruction line from, like, you know, through those pages. And one of the things that I noticed that I just wanted to ask about and get some clarity, so this year it's budgeted for 112,000-ish, and in 2025, and then in 2026, I think it's the same. But in 2023 and 2024, the actual expenditures were way less in terms of instruction. So let me see if I can scroll up and find that, so you know what I'm talking about. So in 2023, it was 34,000, and 2024, it was 46,000, and those are actual amounts. Oh, and actually, then it was budgeted 97,000 this year, and then even more next year. So I guess I'm kind of wondering, in terms of, like, not that I think instruction is not important, I think it's like super important, but if we have kind of a history of not spending that much, like, have we spent, or do we plan to spend that 97,000 that was allocated in 2025? Are there specific plans for specific training and instruction for 2026 that warrants that addition?
What I will say is, in '23 and '24, we didn't have staffing to send anybody to training. We were so far behind that if we sent anybody to training, it created overtime, which just created more problems. So we didn't send very many. The other side of that equation is, our department now, off the cuff, at top of my head, is probably about 60% or 65% less than five years. So all those individuals, the more training we can get them, which we have sent a lot already this year, and so we continue to send because our staffing allows it now, off to training at other places so that they can get some of the, they can't get the experience per se, but they can sure get a lot of training before they have to have that experience. So our hope is, we spend every dollar of that on getting these people up, because at some point, the department's going to be extremely young, especially on officer side and stuff. So this is our goal, is to use that money to get as much training as we can so that they can be ready to take those roles as the department ages out.
Great, thank you very much.
Additional councilmember questions? Councilmember Pete Mountain Smith.
Yes, thank you, Chief Kerr. I was also looking at the budget sheets, and it looks like there's quite a bit more budgeted for overtime. Could you speak to the overtime pay needed?
Well, historically, we have had to have it. With us being fully staffed, we hope we don't. But as we go through, you never know what happens, people get sick, people get hurt, so that's in there in case we have to have it. Also, you have to understand, in that overtime budget, firefighters earn a certain amount of that through FLSA because of the number of hours they work, so that overtime comes out of that money automatically. So it's not just extra hours worked, it's some of their just salary comes out of there as well, because they work, you know, one cycle, they work 96, which they don't get any, but the next two cycles, they work 120, they automatically get overtime by just being on duty. And so some of that money comes out of that overtime budget.
Oh, okay, because of how they're scheduled.
Because of how they're scheduled, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Ruff.
Thank you, Chief Kerr. You mentioned earlier an increase in services provided to Indiana University relative to recent years. Has there been any commensurate deal where the university makes, and it contributes in some way or shape or form to offset the demand, the increased demands on staff time?
They, you know, we have a longstanding agreement with them, that they pay the salaries for everybody at Station 3, and that's continued ongoing. And so that, I think just last year, we had a meeting, and that can, we anticipate that ongoing. It's probably a conversation we have to have, especially with the inspectors having to spend some more time there, but right now, you know, we're, we don't have a, they're doing what they've always done in the past, I don't know if we have had that conversation about going in the future with extra services needed.
Okay, thank you. I had one about a shift, a reduction in the amount of the Fire Department budget that's coming from the general fund and a corollary increase in the PS Lit funding, so it's about 1.7, 1.8 million reduction in general, that looks like it's kind of mostly just migrated to PS Lit instead. A, I wanted to just confirm, is that accurate, is my interpretation of the budget book? And then B, wanted to ask about any rationale, or, you know, what changed in the overall PS Lit funding umbrella that like enabled that? Like, did other things have to shift? Yeah, a bit more about it, thank you.
Yes, you are correct. We moved, we kept all of the salaries in the general fund, and we moved the other just administrative expenses into PS Lit, because PS Lit wasn't being utilized fully, and we thought it was a better use of that dedicated funding source that can be, only be used for police and fire, to start paying for some of those police and fire expenses in the next couple of years. It takes a little bit of the burden out of the general fund. We're completely aware that Lit is going away. There's a lot to talk about with the new Lit structure, especially for fire, with the new Lit rate coming that can be approved by the county. There's a lot to talk about, but for at least the next two years, we think that it makes more sense to put those administrative, fire and police expenses into the public safety fund, and use that, use that funding that is coming in every year.
Thank you. And so the PS Lit was, I think, adopted slightly prior to my service, so two terms ago, essentially, mayor oral and council terms. And my rough understanding was that the primary purpose of it was for capital expenditures and to make capital investments. I know we have no shortage of, you know, outstanding wish list, or, you know, just many needs on the capital investment front. Is, so this seems like a shift in some sense of like the kind of underlying assumption of what that fund is for and what that Lit is for. Does that, does the state, do the state law changes and the fact that Lit's going to look different in the future basically undermine the case that that should be capital, you know, used for bonding, for instance, to support bonding or for other capital expenditures the way I think, you know, was kind of intended for initially?
I'm gonna hypothesize about the future of Lit. It looks like the future Lit will not have those kinds of, any kind of restriction on it, but it's yet to be, yet to be kind of looked into.
Okay, but short answer, I guess, like, so your orientation is no, the PS Lit is not something that we're saving primarily for capital expenditures?
Saving for capital expenditures?
Or dedicating to capital expenditures?
Dedicating, we're still putting capital expenditures in PS Lit, and we're doing other things like repairing capital. There's a lot of motor repairs and fuel and insurance costs that are coming out of there, too. That's probably the bulk of what's coming out of what those expenses are.
Thank you. Any other questions from councilmembers before we go to public comment? Seeing none, do we have any members of the public who would like to comment on the Fire Department's proposed budget? I don't see any here in chambers. Anyone online indicating they'd like to comment?
No.
Still no, still waiting for that first member of the public. I see at least one member of the public who could step up, maybe there's others. Okay, back to councilmember, before the end of the night, we're gonna get one. Okay, back to councilmembers for comments on the Fire Department budget. Councilmember Stasburg.
Thank you. I think it's cause for celebration that we're about to be fully staffed in the Fire Department. I think it's pretty awesome. And I have a couple more questions I'm going to submit written, just giving you a heads-up for that. And then the other thing that I wanted to comment on was appreciating that Councilmember Ruff used his time to ask about the IU payment in regard to the fraternities and sororities, and I just really support a conversation moving forward to consider figuring out a way to compensate for the inspectors' time related to that service that we're doing for those students. And just kind of making sure that because the property tax situation is so different with IU-owned properties and some of those other related buildings related to IU's campus, I just think it's really important that if we as a city are putting services and resources toward that, that we're also figuring out some kind of compensation model for that. So, thank you.
Additional comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Rallo.
Following up on what I asked about, that is that anticipating the largest development in Bloomington on the southwest side, which is already lacking a fire station that might have been, should have been built over the past couple of decades, I think that we should, the city, the council should be prioritize having, the land is dedicated, or at least we've been promised the land by the developer, but have a plan for building the fire station, have it in place before it's needed, so that it doesn't put further strain on the existing infrastructure and services. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional councilmember comments? I am not seeing any. Okay, thank you very much, Chief Kerr, and members of the Fire Department. We are on to our last presentation of the evening, which is the Police Department and Dispatch. I believe Chief DeKoff is presenting, and we have 20 minutes allotted for this presentation.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike DeKoff, I'm the chief of the Bloomington Police Department, and I appreciate the opportunity to present my budget request. So you can see in 2024, the calls for service that we had were 75,951. That was a 2.4% increase from the previous year of 2023. 2024 wins, violent crime decreased by 24%, and our community engagement increased by 40%. The biggest decrease in violent crime was in the area of assaults and domestic battery. There was increases in child abuse and neglect. However, I will point out that our agency has four detectives that are a part of the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force that's operated by the Indiana State Police. In 2024, we were awarded the Affiliate of the Year for our investigation and our assistance with other regional law enforcement agencies in the investigation of crimes against children. We also were recognized this year as an outstanding agency for, again, for the continuation of that work. Our community engagement, there's multitudes of things we do. National Night Out is one, we just had that, I thank all of you for your participation in that and showing up. We participate and do drug take-back programs, Pack the Cruiser, which is a food drive, food collection drive that we participate in. We have our Resident Police Academy, where we have citizens attend a 10-week session where we go over all aspects of the department, just answering questions for them. Our Teen Academy is for younger people who are interested in possibly a career in law enforcement. We do car seat fittings and installations. And something new that we're doing is a bike index program where we're trying to register bicycles, since we have a pretty big bike theft problem in our community. Some more information on calls for service. You can see in 2019, it dipped in the COVID years and has increased ever since then. This is a comparison from January to June 30, from '23, '24, and '25. What is really interesting here is '25, we've already seen a 23.9% increase in that six-month period over our calls for service from '24. Spent a little bit of time on recruiting and retention. Again, we very much appreciate you supporting the increases in salaries for sworn police officers. We had a hiring process earlier this year where we had the largest group of people that ever, that we had ever hired, and that was 11. Of that 11, six of those people were certified. Five of those certified people are just about ready to get out on their own, so we're going to be able to add police officers to help with the call volume. The other, the other five that are not certified, start the academy at the beginning of September, they will be done at the end of September, and then they will start their field training We have many partnerships with different social service providers in the community. Our DROs, our social workers, our outreach workers, work with 41 different service providers in our community. That makes a huge impact in the people that we're able to work with, serve, and make sure that we get services for. Here's some statistics on some of the outreach things that we do. I will, the outreach statistics in the lower-left corner, those are statistics from two people that we have hired that work for Centerstone, and they help us walk around downtown and along the Beeline and identify people that they believe might need services. They usually start from our substation at the Beeline, walk north to the downtown area and Kirkwood area, and they work with providers to provide those who need services with those services. I want to highlight one that they did earlier this year, well, started last year and continued into this year. There was a person that they were dealing with that was service and housing resistant, which means they did not want any kind of help. They continued to work with this person, the person started accepting services and eventually housing. And so that, in and of itself, they continue to follow up with that individual to make sure that they're connected to the services that they need so that they can stay on course to keep housing and those important mental health services that they need. So that's just one example that they've done, they've done many other. I will tell you that the statistics on the right are from our social workers. Much of '24 was accomplished with only two social workers for the bulk of the year. As you are aware, we have been struggling to hire the fourth social worker for Dispatch, we were able to do that just a couple of weeks ago, so hopefully that program will be moving forward once they complete the bulk of their training. Stride, there's been a lot of talk about stride. STRIDE, there's been a lot of talk about STRIDE. In 2024, BPD diverted 122 people to this, to this alternative response agency. We are currently, the city is working with them on a marketing plan that Cook Incorporated is very active in also. Cook helped kind of start the ball rolling for the discussions for this program to start. They are still involved in that, and we very much appreciate that, because they bring the business community into also looking at, at these issues and providing the guidance and the support that's needed to keep it going. So we're looking forward to increasing the amount of, of people that go to STRIDE with this marketing program. STRIDE also has a response team that is available 24 hours a day that they also utilize, and BPD also uses that team as well. Some information on our downtown resource officers, you can see the total number of calls for service in '24. We currently, that, that program started with six full-time officers. We're still not backed to that because of the staffing shortages that we still have, but we have three full-time people and, and three part-time people, along with a sergeant that oversees that unit. Something new in the '26 budget is funding for a reunification fund. This fund, we've, we've, other providers have that fund, but it's not as easily accessible. And when we encounter someone that is new to our community, many times when they're first here, they want to get back to where they came from. And so that's what this fund will be used for mostly. We will also be using it for people who might need work-related equipment to help them get jobs, such as safety goggles or work boots or something like that. But there's money in the, in next, in the '26 budget, so that we can help people get back to their own communities where they have support services and kind of that network to, to help them succeed. Talk a little bit about emergency response and investigations. You'll see the four categories that are on this slide. Our weapons calls are, have been down the last couple of years, but we still have them. There, there've been a couple of high-profile incidents that have happened more recently on the B-line. We were able to make arrests in, in all of those where weapons were used. But it, part of this is, is based on the forensic investigations that we are doing on weapons that we recover. We utilize resources that, that run tests on these, on these firearms that help link them to other crimes, not only locally, but around the state. And that has helped us better to be able to charge people with weapons offenses and get convictions, which is, I think, a big component of why we have seen fewer gun calls. The drug situation, we are, we still continue to have overdoses. We still continue to have dealers that prey on vulnerable people, and so we are focusing on dealers that do that. We've had several cases where we have arrested people for dealing resulting in death because of the investigations that we've been doing. We do not take an overdose case just as an overdose case. We also look at those as criminal investigations to see where that person might have gotten those drugs and, and how we can look to see, how we can charge those dealers with providing the drugs that caused those overdoses. Human trafficking is something that we are starting to have more and more of those types of cases. We're partnering with other agencies and, and the state to investigate those cases, because they don't necessarily just stay in one community. They, they are, they are regional and statewide. And so we are, we are working to make sure that we can put a stop to those types of cases, so that those, those people who are, are in those situations can, can be freed from them and, and go on and live a normal life. And I also already mentioned the ICAT cases. We are very active in those types of investigations and frequently are making arrests for child pornography and, and child sex cases. A little bit of information from our dispatch center. We are currently 14 telecommunications short. We have a hiring process underway where we're trying to fill some of those positions. We also are in the process of looking for a new manager that oversees the entire unit. We are in the application process right now, and hopefully soon we'll be starting interviews to, to fill that position. Capital projects, the mayor has talked frequently about 714 South Rogers. It's the proposed site for the new police headquarters. We're excited about this location. It's, it's close to downtown, it's close to the B-line. It's reuse of an existing structure, and we believe that it will be a nice anchor for that neighborhood who has struggled in the past with things that have gone on. This project is something that we are still very much early, early in the planning stages of it, but I just wanted to touch on that and let you know that we, we are still moving forward with that project. And with that, I thank you for your consideration and we'll take whatever questions.
Thank you, Chief DeKoff, for your presentation. Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, chief. Thanks for that thorough presentation. And so anticipating your level of staffing is increasing, will we reach a point where we can anticipate greater speed enforcement in the community?
So we have done, we've started to increase track of traffic enforcement the last couple of years. As we add more officers, those, those calls that are coming in will be spread out. So yes, we should be able to, to look at those types of complaints and put out radar units to, to work on those issues.
Okay, that's cool. The, so your- Your, your calls so far in 2025 have been up significantly. Is there something that particularly accounts for that?
No, it's actually across the board, which is, it's, the last couple of years, that's been the case. There's not one particular area that we, we can point to that says, ah, that's the problem. It's, it's literally across the board.
And I had a constituent ask me about, we used to have a program called Silent Nights. I don't know if it's still-
Quiet Nights?
Sorry?
Quiet Nights?
Quiet Nights, Quiet Nights. And is, is that still something that we can-
So we-
You can deploy officers for?
Yeah, we still do noise enforcement. We haven't kind of used the term quiet nights a whole lot recently, but we, we, unfortunately, frequently when we have those units out, they're pulled off to take other calls for service that tend to be more, more pressing.
Got, gotcha. Okay, well, maybe level of staffing will attend to that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Thank you, Chief DeKoff. This may be a question for the controller, but I noticed under, on your memo, when it talks about the different budget categories and changes in each, it says under other services, that some of the costs have increased, but those were offset by the last equalization payment being made to Monroe County for central dispatch. What is an equalization payment?
So when we entered into the agreement with the county many years ago, when we built the new dispatch center, the difference, the, the city owns the property, the county paid for the equipment, and so that was offset. So those equalization payments are, are reimbursement back to the county, so that it comes out even.
So the city still owns the property?
She wasn't here, she said. That's what it had to do with. It was payments back to the county to equalize the payments that both entities made towards dispatch.
Okay, so the goal is a 50-50 split of expenditures between county and city, or-
I don't think it was quite 50-50, but the city, the city has an asset. We have, we have the building. The county did not have the asset. They had equipment that has to be replaced. So that's legal, probably, is the better question to ask for that, because Corporation Counsel Rice is the one that negotiated basically that. She was here then.
Did you tell them those payments are over?
Yeah, that's what she asked. She said it's over.
Controller McClellan, do you have anything to add?
No, I just wanted to make sure you knew the payments were over, and we can dig out that schedule and kind of look at the language in that interlocal and, you know, and go from there and ask legal.
Oh, so it's, it was, those payments went on for a certain number of years and now it's done?
Yes, we are, we have paid off what we were supposed to pay. So we, we will be done.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, well, that's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Additional questions from council members? Councilmember Stasburg?
Thank you. On that same page in your memo, it says that, you know, there's increases due to fuel costs, and I'm wondering if there's been any investigation into electric vehicles for police usage?
Um, so there have been some national studies of electrical, electric vehicles and, and policing, and there are not very many agencies that do that, because they just, they seem to not hold up as well. I know of one, I think there's one agency in Indiana that has a couple of Teslas that they use, but they, with all the equipment that are in police cars, the, the electrical system, it, it just doesn't hold up as well as a traditional car.
Okay. And then the other thing, so I have like more questions that I'm gonna end up submitting written as well, but I think the other thing that I want to ask you now is, so we're like pretty close to fully staffed, I think, in comparison to where maybe we have been. So if you could just take, you know, the last remaining time to talk a little bit about how Bloomington residents will see that change and what kind of effect that would have on them to have that greater staffing, and similarly, like, within the department, what kind of changes you have seen in terms of officers and culture of department and that kind of thing? Because I assume there's like less overtime if there's more officers and that sort of thing. So if you could just talk about that for a minute, that'd be great.
Yeah, so, so our overtime expenses have not really changed yet, because even though we just hired 11 people, they're not out yet on their own. So we had 20, I think it was roughly 20, 21 openings. We cut that down to 11. We do have a couple of people, I think, that are slated to retire at the end of this year, but we also have another hiring process where we have, I believe it's six people that we are doing backgrounds on. So we're hopeful that we'll cut the 11 positions that we have open by, in half. So we keep making progress. What we continually, one, one area that we are seeing a lot of improvements is we're not seeing other office, our current officers leave to go to other departments. That's been reduced dramatically because of the take-home cars and because of the salary increases. And so as we, as we continue to hire people, it's, hiring a cop is a lengthy process. There's a lot of training involved. So if we don't get somebody who's certified, it takes a long time to get them out on their own. But we will continue to, to work towards that, and hopefully by the end of this year, we will have less than 10 openings, so that as we start next year, we can continue to fill those positions and, and get police officers on the street. What that means is that we should have less overtime. Sorry, I just saw the time.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll follow up with that with a written comment, so then you can talk more about the community impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional council member questions? I am not seeing any. Okay, members of the public, this is your last chance of the evening to comment, this time on the police department and dispatch budget proposal. Do we have any takers in chambers or online?
Yes, I do have one online.
Congratulations and thank you. Please state your name and you will have two minutes to comment.
Yes, Kevin Keough. Yeah, I want to discuss cybersecurity and cybercrime. In recent years, unfortunately, police departments, like many organizations, have become increasingly vulnerable to cyber attacks and data breaches. In fact, it's been a little over a year, Monroe County government experienced an intrusion. And it's not really clear how extensive it was, but I know the, our police department is connected to them, but it, I know that investigation's ongoing, but we, we really don't hear much about it as a member of the community. But it seems like some of the data that the police department has would be very valuable to hackers. Personal identifiable information, your case files, your operational plans and some threat assessments, digital evidence, law enforcement databases and employee data. Plus, as we heard earlier this week, the federal government is kind of reducing their support in this area, which concerns me, too. But it seems, you know, why is, you know, you know, a lot of the, the data the city has is public data, but this data is valued because of ransomware, and I don't know if that attack was a ransomware attack, identity theft, undermining investigations, disrupting officer operations, even espionage, and also public shaming and discrediting, which is unfortunate. So that concerns me, the cybersecurity, also cybercrime. I know my time's running, it's not much time, but the Bloomington Foods incident, I think, is a good example of a cybercrime, the skimming of data card, data, you know, credit cards. I know the, the police department was involved in that. I know there was a lot of people who, who were affected by that, that incident. It's a crime. And I know you, you help Bloomington Foods, you do the investigation, but all these people who suffered that crime, I don't know if you keep statistics on cybercrimes in Bloomington, because I know it's underreported. I just read an article today where it's $10 trillion a year, and I know my time's up already, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comment. Appreciate that. And please do feel free to follow up via email with the council if there's more you wanted to share. Do we have any other members of the public on Zoom who would like to comment this evening?
No.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none in chambers, we can return to council members for comments on the police and dispatch budget. Councilmember Stasburg?
I'll just quickly say I didn't get to, we didn't get to talk about dispatch very much during my questions, but I just find it, like, it is a crisis that we have 14 out of 18 positions open in dispatch and three out of six supervisors open. Like, that just feels like crisis level to me, and I just wanted to call that out as part of my comment that, and I know that there's work being done on that. I know that there's been ongoing work being done on that. Since I've been sitting in this seat, it has been being talked about as an issue. And now that our fire is, is staffed, our police are really, really getting there, I just hope that there's gonna be some real attention on dispatch and kind of going back to the, the line items in the end that I didn't get a chance to talk about, that I will follow up on. It also seems like there's been some incuts to the instructional lines related to dispatch. Those were kind of hard to read and hard to determine. So it's, you know, like, like, I really have kind of the outstanding question that I don't expect to be answered right now, of what can we do to support dispatch in getting staffed? What, what can we do to get them to stay and, and how, how, just how, how we can do that as, as a system, because they are just a really, really essential piece of the whole public safety picture that, I mean, it didn't get much time at the mic today, so that's just why I wanted to call that out. And if any dispatchers are listening, we really, really value you. And if anybody's out there going, oh, that might be an interesting job, like, look into that, because it's a very essential service that we need. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional council member comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to say that some of us here have been mentioning that we will put other questions in written form, and I wanted to assure the public that those questions and the answer to those questions will be made available to the public on the city council website. It'll probably be part of the council packet when we actually get the budgets, budget legislation. So if you go to the city- So if you go to the city council website and click on Meetings and Documents for that upcoming meeting, I think it's September 24th, that's probably where it will be. In any case, it will be available publicly, and if you need any help accessing that, you can contact the council office or any of us here, and we'll be happy to let you know. Just wanted to clarify because we keep saying, oh, we'll ask that later, and we will, and it'll be public. So, thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments from council members? I am not seeing any. And that concludes our second night of budget hearings. I think we set a record, and we'll be back at it Monday evening next week, August 25th, at 5:30 PM here in council chambers. Thank you all for tuning in and presentations this evening. We're adjourned.